Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we're grateful for you to come to this regular rescheduled Bader City Council meeting, which I will officially call to order at 6:02 PM on this, the eighth day of February 2018. We'll proceed with our call to order, well, the roll call, so.
Judy Costello?
Here.
Jason Daly?
Yes, he indicated that he would be arriving a little late, but he will be coming.
So do we consider that absent excuse for right now?
I think it was, but he let us know unless council members feel pressured.
Well, hang 'em up. I'm just kidding.
If he shows up, then I'll cross out absent. Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter?
I'm so proud of you here.
I wrote it. I wrote it out, so. Mayor Smith?
Also present. All right, well, we have the forum, we're grateful for that. Well, let's now proceed with our pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to do something a little bit out of the ordinary, and we have a Boy Scout who's fully uniformed this evening, and they are ready at a moment's notice. I'm going to ask Thielen Schei, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Fantastic.
Wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Thielen. That was wonderful.
I'm sorry, for the record, the name is Thielen?
T-H-A-L-E-N.
Official record.
You are on the record.
In the Mets.
You're elected official.
One or two years, and I sit right there.
All right, then with that, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. I felt appropriate to take a minute and share some information that I got at the last mayor's meeting Friday of last week, and part of it was information regarding development that's taking place at exit 63. The new mayor, Winlock Don Bradshaw is his name, he just received from Olympia the state legislative representatives a $1.5 million grant to construct a well at the 1,000-acre property that the city acquired 10 years ago, and they're going to put that well in with the storage facility, and he's also indicated that he's going to go aggressively after funding to build a waste treatment facility on that site, which, when that's completed, hopefully, he thinks within the next year or two, that is going to open up that property for development, and he has an individual who he's working with, who was former resident of Lewis County, who is interested in participating in that. And I'm beginning to lose my voice. He wanted everybody to know that he's going to do everything he can to encourage the development of that in a commercial and industrial manner, and as he does it, he knows it's going to benefit all of the neighboring communities, so I figured I'd share that with everybody. Plus, oh, weird. Plan B here. I have it here. I've got my pocket supply here. He also said that, no, it was Commissioner Edna Fun reported that at our next mayor's meeting, the first Friday in March, there's an individual who represents the current executive office, who's going to be president at this next meeting, who represents Donald Trump Organization, and he's going to, he's asked each of the mayors to come prepared to share with him any infrastructure programs and needs that our cities have, and he's going to make note of that, and he's going to then take that information back to Washington, and because President Trump, you listened to his State of the Nation address, said that one of his next big ticket items is to allocate 1.7 billion, no, trillion, $1.7 trillion dollars to renew and restore this nation's infrastructure, which will include airports, freeways, and in his address, he mentioned collapsing infrastructure in our communities, water systems and waste treatment facilities, and that's where my ears perked. Remember when I mentioned to Kathy Reed, and she's, well, I'm not going to make an ad shored to come, but, and obviously, we can't count any coinage until it's printed of me, but there's an official representative who's coming, and our commissioners are excited for his arrival, and I'm excited to ensure that we have our voice heard. We're going to go with a tin cup, and I'm going to pound the table to that end, so I felt it was appropriate that council members are aware of that, and if you want to come watch and participate, everybody's invited. So that would be at 9:00 at the Port House in Shigilis on the first Friday in March.
On the March 2nd.
March 2nd. Thank you. Okay, with that, second item, we thought it would be appropriate to let everybody know that there's going to be a public hearing held by the planning committee on February 16th at 6:00 PM here, and it's going to regard the update to our subdivision regulations, which have been a long time in coming, so if you want to participate in as a member of the public, of course, elected officials are a little bit different category, but anybody here who would like to come to that, it's going to be part of the science process.
Will this be part of our, is this part of our plan, the plan, and they're just looking for input on the subdivision regulations of it?
Well, this becomes part of our development regulations, and the development regulations are part of what gets put into the comprehensive plan.
So there is no one in town doing a subdivision right now, or any of that type of thing is not what spurred any of this? This has to do with it?
No, it's just what spurred it is several years ago, our attorney looked at our subdivision ordinance and said, wow, that's way out of date, you need to update your, so that's what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. On that note, though, I appreciate you inquiring, I've been intrigued to note, and correct my figures if I've captured them inaccurately, that we are up to five permits for new home construction in our city.
So we counted?
Yes, I believe so. We've got new permits, and people are buying land, and they're beginning to build in this city, and we've had two new houses just kitty-corner from the fire department, and they've now legally connected to our system, fix their drainage.
Except they were doing.
Yeah, and so houses are getting purchased and occupied, so this is, if these five homes are completed, that would be five times the number of homes in the last 15 years.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's shocking, but we're experiencing a turnaround, and that, we can anticipate, will increase when we complete this waste treatment plant.
Are those stick-built or?
Manufactured.
Manufactured, for the most part, there's one or two that might be, and so, but we can just dig into that, if not one, most of the sites. So, it's news. Okay, then the last item was update on the park board, they met last week, and as we anticipated, they restructured their board, and they have a new chairman now, Kelly Schei is the chairperson, and they were informed of the fact that our council members would like to have a report.
Where's the park board and the planning? They're not there. They're both to sell.
And note.
I saw that. Tell you anything.
Yeah, Kelly, the new chairman, is, they're balancing their schedules that they have on Thursday nights.
She would have been here tonight, but she's learning how to make chocolate truffles right now.
She does a very good job at that bakery, so I'll let her off this time.
Prescheduled before she was chairman.
Yeah, and so, and with some chagrin, or Deborah Crumples forgot about the meeting, and so she couldn't make it, she was in shelter, but she was totally aggravated, but she's going to be at the next one, it's on her calendar officially, and, but she's been sworn in, and so they asked if I would have the patience to, or have the council exercise patience, and they will definitely have a report at the next meeting, which is going to be on the 19th.
After their next meeting, which would be March 19th.
March 18th, so that's a guarantee, so write that down. And Ken Jocelyn is going to be the individual who will make that report, because of the scheduling challenges. Write that down, too. They want to do this. There, that's my report. Now, let's proceed with council reports.
I was wondering if I could ask the mayor a question.
Sure.
Were you going to be interested in doing the mayor's report on the front of the town crier? Could you?
Yes, we contacted them and informed them, but I am not all that seriously inspired by that project, so you can convince me otherwise, but maybe not in the public forum.
Okay, okay, well, I was just, I was just questioning Mr. Bradshaw and Steve from Toledo, and last night, the Castle Rock mayor said that he was going to join in on that, and so I just was, I was just questioning.
No, that's a reasonable question, I wrestled with it, and we've debated it, so I could have a change of heart, see how that goes. All right, now council reports. Any reports from the members of the?
I understand that there's some new legislation, I believe, from the state about the public records requests, and I would like to get some information and maybe talk about that, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that.
Yes, Edna Fun has indicated that she will send a distillation of that to all of the elected officials, the mayor's, at that meeting, so I can access that for you.
Perfect.
Yep, so consider that then.
Did you have anything, Joe?
I did not.
Okay, may I?
Well, please.
I would like to put on our next agenda, if at all possible, if Joe could do an update on A Street schedule, design, landscape decisions, and any other information he might have.
Okay.
If that would be something that you could do, and then my next thing, I have three on my list, my next thing is the inter-local sewer loan, I have questions about it. Loan means there's a payment, there's an interest, there's a timeframe, there's all of that kind of stuff, and I, I think that ordinance is so vague that I really do need to talk with my fellow council people about how that all comes about, so if we could put that on there for the next one, maybe two, to have a brief discussion.
Well, bear in mind that you could access that.
I did, I did, I just kind of would like to do that. And then my third thing on the list is, I would like to get together with my fellow council people and rearrange our seating, and I know, I know that sounds silly, but...
A shower?
No, I like to sit next to you, Leona, it has nothing to do with this.
No, I have fears this right now.
But Jason has to get all the way over here to talk to Mike, Mayor Ken has to lean back so I can talk to Joe, I'm leaning all the time, and I was wondering if we could get together as a group and come up with something that's a little bit easier for all of us to be able to converse with each other instead of, I mean, I love the audience, but I really want to talk to you guys, and I can't see Jason, I'm leaning, that kind of, but that type of thing, so if we can maybe throw that up in the air and at some point maybe talk about it.
Yeah, this used to be straight, and we did this to create that.
And it helps, and it does help a little bit, but I see, and Mike, and I like to see your faces and be able to talk to everybody, so I do that.
Yeah, you make me nervous.
More of a knife-to-the-roundtable kind of.
Actually, we wouldn't have to tip them.
No, not really much, I don't think, just have a little bit.
Yeah.
So that was my, that was my comment.
Seems reasonable to me, I have a swivel neck, so I'd be a favor.
Certainly.
Yeah, it is.
With flash.
Exactly, with flash. So, yeah, anyway, any other?
There's a May Day meeting tomorrow, 9:00 at the community center, if anybody would care to join. I'm not going to be talking to anybody today, but if anybody would care to join, 9:00 at the community center, we're having another May Day meeting, everything is going very, very well, I think, moving right along, everything's falling in line.
Did you get the artwork?
No, not till tomorrow, we have made buttons.
Nice.
We did that at our last meeting, Jason made buttons for us.
Cool.
I thought that was what the artwork was for.
And the school is doing it, but we had to practice with Mike's machine he loaned us, so we all have a button now made by Jason.
Cool.
See, there's one, and I wrote mine on my thing, but yeah.
But anybody's welcome.
Yes. Did you say that was at 9:00?
9:00 at the community center, yes.
Good, so, all righty, well then, absent any other reporting, then let's, agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for February 8, 2018, as written.
Okay, we have a motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve this evening's board. Yeah, we did eliminate number four.
Yep.
So, as currently written, do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Minutes from our last council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the city council meetings on January 25, 2018, as written.
Okay, Mrs. Costello has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Leona, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. After approval, for the first half of February 2018, motion action.
I'll make a motion to approve first half of February 2018 vouchers for $13,943.25.
Okay, Mrs. Costello has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures as noted, and all in favor?
Nope.
Wait, you have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Special reports, we have Deputy Cheeseman here with us, we're grateful for his presence.
I forgot to print out the stat sheets.
Oh dear, it's okay, we will distribute them later.
I'm all good. Off again, off again.
So, so did you want me just to do January, or did you want me to go over last year or two, did you guys get those stats out for the whole last year?
They did get last year's stats at the last meeting, but there was no report.
Oh, okay, okay, so let's go over January first, there was a total of 17 calls, only one criminal call, there's a theft that is under investigation still, so it's not, it's being investigated, and other than that, there was basically another scam information, the old IRS scam is starting to go back up again because of IRS and the new tax laws, so just be aware that that is out there. There was 301 contacts, 20 traffic stops, and two misdemeanor arrests for January.
So with the IRS thing, I don't have a warrant out for me?
Yes.
All right.
I don't think he disclosed that.
You can hope that, huh?
Needs to talk to you at the end of the meeting. It's right after the meeting.
So, the, just to go over last year's stats that you had, 2017, basically, you probably were looking at it and said, okay, there was calls, total calls, like 244, and then in the, and I had in parentheses, I had 214. The 214 is the correct number of calls, because remember I told you on every month that we had a few that dispatch was making some errors because they pull a case number that was associated with Centralia, because it's Third Street and A Street in Centralia is the same, so, so that's where you had 30, 30 calls, basically, 30 calls were nothing calls, so you won't have that anymore because now we're not pulling any more major numbers, so now it's just going to be straight county numbers, and so that won't, that won't be happening anymore. It did go up a little bit in criminal calls, there was 24 criminal calls, where last year we had 17, so they were, they were up just a little bit, but if you, I gave you the list of all the crimes, your solve rate was pretty high, because we had, we must, we had some burglars in here, and it never fails, when you arrest one burglar, you clear a bunch of cases. So, 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 yeah, there was, there was, what do we have, we had three theft cases and three burglary cases that were all cleared by arrest, and I don't know whether they were the same person, I'd have to look them all up, but those all, all got cleared. Of course, you had, you had a couple assault, assault cases, assault cases are usually always cleared, because I think both of those were domestic violence, and domestic violence is a mandatory arrest, so those get cleared by arrest anyhow. And then we had a little theft of a motor vehicle case here, that 70 miles, that were just saved in, and that one got solved because we caught them in a car, so. So, overall, if you look at it, we probably, even though there was 24 criminal calls, I think it was probably, if you took away all those, it lessened overall that you have cases that are overall suspended and not unfounded cases, you have less, so, it wasn't a bad year, it's just, like I say, it was, basically, it was only up one call total, because we had 213 in 2017, or 2016 and 2017, we had 214, so, not too bad.
That's pretty good. That's progress.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Is the house over here still being watched because?
Yes.
I've heard lots of rumors of people coming and going into that house.
Yeah, and we wouldn't mind getting called on that to make contact with them, but right now, the paperwork is all in the process for the house, so really, the people, the people that own it can still deal with it, because as far as the forfeiture stuff of us taking it over and stuff, that all has to go through the court system, and they have to have so many days to reply to the forfeiture stuff and everything like that, but we would still like to know if somebody shows up, and we've gotten a couple of calls on that, but when we get here, they're not there, but, but yeah, they shouldn't, there shouldn't be anybody there, I wouldn't think, but...
So there's nothing going on over there?
There's nothing going on over there, no, no, that one's, it's, it's totally empty and doesn't have anything in it, so there's nothing going on there, so.
Yeah, I did see people as well, so.
Yeah, there, and it could be, you know, I'm just saying, it could be people that were thinking, oh, that's a grow, we're going to come by and buy some, and then they come by and find out that there's nothing there, so, you know, that type of a deal, people going through, because, because like I say, that was a chain of all three counties, and so people, people knew of where these grow locations were, that they could get, get some stuff, so I'm sure that's probably what it was, is people were showing up thinking that, oh, that one probably didn't get hit, so we'll try that and see if we can buy some.
Would you be able to share with the members of the council the magnitude, as it turns out, of that operation?
Boy, and I don't, and I don't know exactly how many places were hit totally, I want to say it's in the twenties between Pacific County, Grace Harbor County, Lewis County, and then there was a few in the tip, the southern tip of Thurston County, those are all, all hit, and it's an Oriental ring, and it's out of, they're based out of California, Southern California is where they're based out of, and they just go around and look at properties and buy them up cash right on the money, so you think that if someone was buying a $200,000 piece of property and they come up with $200,000 cash, that's pretty good, but, but, yeah, so, so basically, that's what it was, and there was a couple of arrests made, but basically, most of the stuff is, is that we confiscated all of the grow operations and all of the, all of the marijuana, and then we have seized all the property, all the properties have been seized from all of them, so.
So will there be a big real estate sale coming soon? Because I think the sheriff's department doesn't like owning.
Yeah, they don't like owning, so.
How often do you have the sale?
Yeah, well, as soon as all the stuff clears, because they got to go through all this stuff of whether they can come back on the forfeiture hearing and stuff, but as soon as all that clears the deal, then that's when we'll put it up, and it'll be announced like the sheriff's sales that we announce, it'll just be in one of those, it'll just be an announcement that says there's a sheriff's sale, and that's what it'll be.
And does the city get any of that money?
Ah.
We asked.
What, you asked?
I don't think so, that's beyond me.
Not, not in the realty business.
Can we, can we file penalties for?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Let's ask.
Yeah, you might be able to do.
File penalties for growing marijuana in the city limits and any fines that were attached?
I don't know, that's not...
I did, yeah, that, we talked about...
That's a straight ordinance.
Mm-hmm, maybe we should look up the ordinance and check to see if there were fines and daily penalties for that.
Yeah, because anytime there's a sale, it has to pay off, that's the first thing that has to pay off, is taxes and fines and penalties, those are the things that has to come out of it from the bid to start off with, if anything like that.
Yeah, okay, that's something that we'll definitely explore.
We need a new sewer plant. Come on, baby.
I don't think that house is going to pay for the sewer plant, but, you know.
Hey, wishful thinking.
Pay for our taxes.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you guys may have back taxes on it, too, I don't know, maybe.
We'll check, thank you so much for that report, appreciate it. All right, well, with that, then let's proceed with our city business, we only have three items, I think it should be, number one, council to reconsider Resolution 0320-18, which has to do with our simple matter of making signatories, given the selection of our new mayor pro temp.
The new employee. We have the same mayor, so we didn't have to change that.
Gotcha.
So this is about the Denny, this isn't about Joe?
Correct.
I, my, I, that totally wrong, I thought this was about...
I've had signing authority for a couple of years now.
Yeah, okay, you flip page over that side, sorry about that, here I was.
I think we were on the same sheet.
Were we on the same sheet now? Because I didn't even flip that over.
So it says two signatures, so does it have to be one the mayor or the pro temp and one from the city, or can it be?
For check approval, there has to be two signatures, it doesn't specify in this who has to sign it, but typically, it's myself, the clerk, or one of the clerks, and the mayor or the mayor pro temp.
I think I sign everything, right? Is there anything that I have not signed?
There was one...
Only when you're out of town or something.
There was one thing, there was one thing, a summer ago, you were out, and I had to sign, I'm not sure what it was, it was something time-sensitive.
Mortgage to the city hall or?
See, that was my question.
Power bill or something.
If the mayor is unavailable, then it automatically goes to Joe, which I trust you 100%, don't get me wrong, anything, but anything and everything then would go to Joe, no matter what it was, there is no...
I've never heard otherwise.
Okay, all right, that was, that was my, that was before I flipped this over.
Oh, so, well, thank you for getting clarity on that, so I guess...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 03... I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 03-2018.
Need to read it?
What?
The title.
The title. Just read the title, because we didn't have the instructions. That's okay.
302018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vader, Washington, updating the authorized signers for the city's bank account.
Heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution Number 032018 as read. Do we have a second?
I will.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. Any additional counsel commentary? Are we voting? During none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Item number two, council to review the code enforcement courtesy notice along with the courtesy notice. So hopefully, you've had a chance to read and ruminate on that. So I'll turn the conversation over to the council members.
How do we feel about it?
I absolutely love the first one. And I liked the format of it, and I liked everything about it. So I'm good with that one. However, when I got to the second one, I was not fond of the part that says, reaching out to you one last time before moving forward with any legal action. I was thinking, maybe we could say, reaching out to you before moving forward with the city's code enforcement action or something. I just have real issues with that legal action thing. So if we just changed on the second one.
Reaching out to you before.
I'm thinking, reaching out to you before moving forward with something to defect the city's code enforcement, I don't know, action or whatever.
What about just a notice of violation?
A notice of violation. That would be fine? Sure.
Because that is the next step, right?
Because that is the next step. Correct. Yes, that is the next step. Okay.
And Sarah, what was it you didn't, you?
No, I, I liked, I liked it.
I did too. I li, I like it. I'm happy.
I'm very happy with it. I'm very pleased that it's finally, that it's finally progressed to this. And we can get it going now.
Having said that, let's find the motion.
Yep. Any other thoughts on the right side of the?
No, it's, it's fine.
I don't think it requires a motion.
I'm not sure I.
Yes, we need to release tables.
I don't know if you meant right side, but.
It didn't come out well. Let's just strike, strike that from the east side of the table. It sounded like we're okay. So we'll await a motion.
Okay, oh, do we need a motion?
Not really.
I don't think we need a motion. We were just getting them.
No, you're probably right.
We've already done a motion that states we will do this before sending out. That part has not even, I don't think a motion would hurt, but I don't know that it's necessary.
It's not good where it isn't. It's absolutely necessary.
I'll make a motion, and I'm very excited that this is actually happening now. I'll second it.
I'll second it. Yes.
It duly noted for the record.
Okay, wonderful.
And this should enable us to set in motion actions that I know the council is concerned about and is.
And how soon would this action be able, now that we have addressed this, would it be something that the mayor could direct the city staff to possibly take for Monday morning?
Yeah, I would be uncomfortable, actually, without engaging in an official counsel discussion on the matter, given the long-term potential legal ramifications of it. Because what's, now, correct me if we're dramatizing this, but we are just exploring the ramifications, the consequences of our previous round of fourteen notices of violation, which I think so in the recovery phase, as far as our attorney's fees are concerned. So we know that there are several sites that warrant this action. Is the council ready to initiate another round, I guess, is what I'm seeing. Now, I'm not sure that this, the format of this agenda item authorizes that discussion at this moment in time.
Can we put it on our next agenda?
Absolutely. If you're willing to wait two more weeks. So.
I did have a question, though, if it's okay. I was wondering, who did council want to sign these letters? Who do you want them to be from? Well, does the mayor have heartburn over that?
I have no qualms about signing them.
They're nice letters.
They're not inflammatory, are they?
No.
They're factual.
What if we all sign it?
Yeah, what would happen if we all signed it?
I think that's great. But I do think it would be very wise of us to have the officer deliver it.
I thought the whole idea was to be nicey-nice and not scare anybody.
But that is, and it sets a, I think that would set a, then they can't say they didn't get it.
We can send them certified.
It's not, it's not, we're not bullying. Officer just knocks on the door. He's got a wonderful smile. And we can just say, the city of Vader, the city of Vader would like you to.
Typically, it costs a hundred dollars to have something personally delivered.
Right down the road?
I'm just saying.
My feeling is that we wanted to be sensitive. I think a courtesy notice, maybe the first official to notice a violation, maybe. But since I have to administer these things with the mayoral authority that I have to carry out the functions of will of the council, I'd be uncomfortable sending the sheriff's deputy out armed.
I'm with Leon. I kind of like that idea.
Make something.
Yeah, I, I think I might. I, well, because it's just, it's just, hi there.
That is fascinating.
That does seem, that does seem the opposite effect of what you're trying to achieve.
Yes. That's like having me deliver it or having Leon deliver it.
Sure, sure.
Good evening. This is a really good discussion. And I got to say, as a citizen, I did this in Kelso. We had a neighbor who had wonderful intentions and just became a dump for a couple of weeks. And it was to the point where he was literally in the row, not the normal situation. And some other neighbor said to me, because they were uncomfortable dealing with it, oh, we can call it in and they'll give him a letter. And I'm like, oh, okay, how do you do that? So I called the city and I said, how do we do this? And they said, oh, you just call it in and we'll let them know that, you know, it's been noticed. And could we please take care of it? It's just a polite friendly letter. And if they haven't done anything in two weeks, we'll send them a second letter. And if they haven't done anything in another two weeks, that second letter will have informed them that there will be a follow-up fine starting, I guess, like in a month or something. But I would have been really reluctant if I thought it was going to be a police officer right up front. It was much, I mean, it was gone within the day that, as the next day after he got the letter, everything was taken care of.
Well, that would be nice.
Hopefully, our board will do more of that. I have, I have, I hold it with the next letter. No, just a suggestion. I just thought it might.
I think, I think a policeman can be scary for a lot of people that are not as grounded or as involved in the community as some of us might be.
That's such a nice thought.
That has nothing to do with this.
That's his habit.
Okay, well, I'm okay with this. And if I can put that on our next.
I like, I like Joe's idea. Boy Scouts.
I have the Boy Scouts over it.
Talk a different truth.
It's your body.
Not committed to service.
You guys can make some money.
Those are snorkel money.
I just figured, he has a uniform, but much less threatening, no weapons, still looks official.
How, had we thought about this at all before? Like, were we planning on just mailing them out?
Nobody's ever said.
We never talked about it, okay?
Not that I'm aware of. I just figured we'd send it to certified mail. It's easy enough to do. And there will be situations where there might not be anybody, that, you know, their landlord owns the property, maybe ten bucks too, probably. But we'll deal with those in a case-specific basis. But to me, we'll get these letters there, and then we'll accomplish their courtesy purpose, hopefully. And then, but let's decide at our next council meeting, like you suggested. Did you put that form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we discuss this at length at our next council meeting. The wheres and whys and fors.
Yeah, the courtesy.
Of the courtesy letter.
And initiation of additional work.
Initiation of additional delivery and.
Code enforcement efforts.
Code enforcement efforts.
These letters are going to save us a fortune in attorney fees. I know they are. I know they are.
All right. Well, you've heard the motions submitted by Mrs. Costello to add this topic to the next city council meeting, which time they'll address the delivery strategies, what we've already decided. So to discuss the feasibility of engaging in new enforcement efforts, code enforcement efforts. Did I capture that? All right, with that, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Leon. Any other comments?
Yes. This nice letter had the junk car ordinance, or resolution, attached. Does it also go with the weed and vegetation?
That was just a sample.
That was just a sample. If weed and vegetation is being cited, then we would list that information. Whatever is being cited, we would just list that information.
Okay, these are our, our blank ones, though, that will go for all of that type of, okay, just checking.
With that clarification, any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if you noticed, at the very bottom of the last page, there was stuff about the abatement of dangerous buildings. So anything that's listed as a violation would have city regulations explaining that.
Okay, with that, any other thoughts, comments? We got some. During that, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, let's proceed with our last item. The council update on our limb branch disposal options. We have, since the last council meeting, had a variety of different changes or options or versions of strategies regarding that. And so who is the most recently briefed on that agenda item topic? Jill, do you?
The only, the only new information that I'm aware of is this email that I gave you at the very top, is that the gentleman gave us a, a different option, different cost option for providing some kind of a bay. He, he's putting our new dividers in. That was much less cost, much less expensive.
And that was.
And I'm assuming that because he talked to you.
He called me after the last meeting, and I asked him, I'm just trying to wheel deal, figure something out. I asked him, why don't you put a package together so that we can get this accomplished and this accomplished, and see what it'll run? And this is the first time I've seen this. So I know he'll probably be calling me tomorrow. So.
So I noticed that from his previous adventure, this $1,500 has disappeared out of the equation. Because he's saying he would build that.
Which was a total of 52, right?
Well, down here, it says, we'll trade for mini excavator and an additional $1,500, plus haul the brush away. That was a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that was a pretty good deal. But with this, but then he said, and then to build the.
Oh, and now he's going to do the blocks and he's going to take the stuff and.
So that, so to me, the way I read it, and I will verify with him, the way I read it, that 5230 is gone, and the 1,500 is gone. So we're, I'm bad at math, we're a few thousand dollars ahead.
Haul the brush away. Right. I, I think what he was saying in, in, in the one that we talked about the last time, he would haul the brush away, he would take the mini excavator, and he would give us $1,500. And then he said, if you want, proposal two, if you want the construction of two bays that are 72 feet by 18 feet, that would cost, there would be 53 blocks involved. This is how much that would cost. It would take two loads of rock for a base, hauling, blah, blah, blah. You want him to construct that, that would be 5230 separate from that. Now, his newest thing is that he's saying, okay, maybe you don't want that much, maybe that's too much, 5,200. So how about something smaller? How about the new proposal, exchange for the mini excavator, haul the brush away, and instead of giving you $1,500, I will erect a 20-block bay?
Yes. So I overspoke. It was from 50, 53 blocks to 20 blocks.
Right.
So it's a smaller section.
Thirty-six by 12 or 18 by 24, instead of two 72 feet wide. He says there's two, seven, two bays 72 feet wide and 18 feet deep, was the $5,200 one. So, so basically, $1,500 would pay to erect a 20, or 20 bay, 20-block bay. So a smaller.
So he'd haul them, I'm sorry, he'd haul them here and put them up and everything for us?
That, that's what it looks like to me.
He'd rent.
He said he would erect it. So, so we can actually put it together. Well, where is Jason Rayfield in all of this? Was he in the equation? That, that deal is off the table completely.
At this moment in time, yeah, I don't see any responsibility.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm ready to do anything, as long as we take this mini excavator out of the equation, because it's not helping us get past this to get those limbs gone. This excavator got thrown into the equation, and it's, it's slowed it down, trying to figure out what to do with it, whether to fix it, whether to sell it, whether to do whatever. So I love this one. He's going to erect our little blocks that Leon and I are so excited about.
I like Mike's theory from, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
You look away, I can't tell. I like Mike's idea from the last meeting, where we need equipment. We just rent it, just rent it. I agree. So we're done. Take it back.
Are these bays, are they large enough to do what we want to accomplish? Or this one bay, I guess, is what it is.
Well, we're going to get, we'll get one bay, 20 blocks, either 36 by 12 or 18 by 24.
Is that the same square footage?
I think so. I'll slap my head, I think it is.
Is it?
It's the same 20 blocks. Fifty-something by 36. He's offering 20 blocks. They can only go so many different directions. It should be the same square footage.
Well, I think a block is better, one of these is better than nothing.
In the big, in the big scheme of things.
I'm uncomfortable. And I don't want to weigh in too early on this. In fact, maybe I'll just, I'll just sit back.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, let's keep commenting.
You're uncomfortable?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, making my opinion heard at this moment in your deliberations. If it comes up to a motion and a second, then I'm going to dive in. But go ahead.
What, what is your observation?
If we go with the 36 by 12, then it's going to cost the city, unless my arithmetic is out of line. If we go for the modest-sized bay, 18 by 24, I'd be concerned about that size accomplishing what we hoped it would, and it'll still cost the city money.
Why is it costing the city money?
Because we're giving up the $1,500 for the excavator if we just hadn't hauled the brush away. Could we not build a bay out of treated lumber, for example, for a whole lot less than?
Pallets?
No, the, the.
Yeah, rather than the blocks itself.
Well, for me, thinking long-term wise, those blocks will be there. Well, for me, thinking long-term-wise, those blocks will be there at the point when we are able to, say, get a tractor and load with a tractor out there. We, because if we have just a wood thing, and you take a tractor and try to scoop that out, somebody's gonna hit that wood and it's gone. So, the cement blocks, to me, we can keep, right now it's a good start, and then we can just buy another twenty and add a second bay to it, and keep going from there.
And did, was it not Steve, from Park Board Steve, wish Jason was here? Um, Park Board Steve got all of those Jersey barriers down at McMurphy Park for free? From the state or someone?
Yes, now, these aren't Jersey barriers.
I understand that those are, those are, you're like building blocks, kind of thing.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, a couple things with that, the Jersey barriers have that weird shape, and these are gonna stack so that it's a solid wall, all the way around. Which, if I was doing it at my house, that's what I would want, because you're able to get in there and scrape, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, but this would not be for mulch, it would be for branches and limbs and such.
No, the branches and limbs would still get stacked off to the side, and then we use a chipper, we rent a chipper, and shoot it straight into that...
Into the bunker.
Into the bunker area, and then we can, ultimately, down the road, what would be nice is to charge to dump and charge for mulch. So we get a little piece of the pie coming in and going out, which helps pay for all of this, and it helps go towards building another block.
See, that helps address one of the concerns, eighteen by twenty-four, I was thinking that would be more with limbs.
Oh, no.
This would just be for mulch.
Just for the mulch.
And we do want a brass and leaves area to make the compost, the compost.
Yeah.
And I would think that these, the blocks would make the railroad department happy to have that built up, because weren't they complaining about the brush and stuff falling, all of the garbage and stuff falling down on their property at one point? I don't remember that.
Yeah, they don't like that. The Department of Ecology doesn't like it either.
So if we have this nice Lego burial barrier up there, it seems like that would appease them.
Would it really be a barrier, though?
Except that, you guys are saying the branches wouldn't go in that, so...
But we wouldn't let them accumulate.
Right, they wouldn't get it the way they're now. And how big are these blocks, Mike, do you know?
Um, if I remember right, they're like four or five feet by two feet by about three feet.
For thirty-five dollars?
For thirty-five dollars?
Is that, is he down on his second little area down there? He's saying thirty-five dollars per block, so I was just curious, in the future, what would it cost us if we wanted to add to our adventure? And he's saying thirty-five dollars per block.
It's this, that's getting the blocks here. He's hauling those blocks.
That's a great question, that seems super cheap to me.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, because if it's thirty-five dollars a block...
To me, it would be three hundred and fifty dollars a block, is what I would think it would be.
For that size, that seems awfully large for thirty-five dollars a block.
Yeah.
And, and his hauling fee is two thousand dollars, so that does make more sense, that it would have to be a bigger rig to bring those larger sizes.
Let me further complicate this with my one last point, felt like I wanted to throw out there. Since I, and you are also well aware of our budget constraints, and I get out and talk to members of our community, one of who's here, who's concerned about the city improving the rights of way and streets and such, knowing that how we want to be responsive to those things, and looking at our street improvement budget is so sparse this year, if we wanted to add more gravel and such. All I was wistfully yearning for was an extra fifteen hundred dollars to get that and such. So, we trade that capacity to, because this is gonna cost money still, right? If we lose the excavator, that potential fifteen hundred, and we will come up with some money. I don't know that we've added that up.
No, he's not saying we need to come up with money.
Somehow I thought this hauling blocks...
We're not gonna get the blocks.
No.
You need to go back up there to line one.
The top section.
That's the new deal, the whole top email.
Yeah, the whole top is the new deal with no money, well, you're down here in Maricay, where there's the fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, but what is this, he's gonna bring twenty blocks?
He's gonna bring us, erect a twenty-block bay for us, included in that whole package. Mike's gonna confirm that.
For fifteen hundred dollars, for the fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, that looks like that's what he's trading this year.
I was just projecting that college fee to that.
No.
You're sure of it?
No.
I will, I will confirm, but, but the way, the way I read it, and from talking to him, he's going to build this in exchange for that fifteen hundred dollars.
That's what it looks to me, including hauling, putting it together. That's not how all of us are reading it, but we'll have to verify it with them.
Okay.
Yeah, no money out of our, no money out of our pocket, he gets rid of the massive brush pile, he takes the excavator, and he builds the bay.
He builds us a little block.
No money to exchange his hands.
Now, do we have any opportunity for any grants out there, because we're being like green-friendly or anything? I mean, is there any couple hundred dollar anything here and there out there? Nobody knows?
I don't know, but along these lines, if you could, if, if I could ask Jill to talk to the attorney about charging, and if there's any, um, ideas that the attorney would have, that this would shoot it down, or...
I mean, charging for dumping.
Charging for dumping, charging for, um, for picking up. Because, you know, I'd hate to all of a sudden get it all set up and then go, "Well, you can't do that."
Yeah, and the RMSA, their risk management insurance coverage we've got, if you were gonna chip it, you know, they will add up again, and then you wanna chip it, and we don't have a chipper, so you don't want the public to come in and chip. I don't think our insurance would cover that operation, but...
But we would be able to, with the money, with the money that we get for charging to dump it, we should be able to rent a chipper and pay John, John, to chip it up. And if we do that, say, monthly during the summer, it should keep on top of it, so it's not a whole, you know, week project, or two-week project. And...
So, to proceed with decisiveness, it sounds like we need to do just a smidgen more research with Mr. Jags before we put it to an official motion slash vote. Does that seem reasonable? All right, then, Mike, would you do that research with T. Jags?
Yep, I'll talk to him.
Okay, and we'll do the research with the attorney, and we'll put it back on our next agenda.
Okay, and Leona and I are gonna do some research, looking for us some little eco-friendly grants. How's that sound?
That'd be great.
Okay, great.
Fantastic. Okay.
And I do agree that we need to jump on this fast, because we're gonna start collecting, and we need to get that up and open fast, so...
Agreed.
Is there, is there any way that we can, if I talk to him, and this is the way it is, can we have some type of, um...
Can we vote on a contingent on this being exactly as...
So we don't have to wait another two weeks?
Being exactly as we read it?
I think you can.
Go for it, Mike.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that the city accept the offer by John at T. Jags as written, as it is verified by me, that we think it's the way that it's written.
Contingent upon it not costing the city any money to erect that twenty-block bay.
Yes, contingent that it doesn't cost the city anything, and the twenty-block bay is what we all have in mind.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve the, um, the proposal submitted by T. Jags as described. So...
In, maybe if we add the, in the email from January twenty-ninth.
Okay, that gives it additional specificity, so, captured that too, Jill. Okay, with that motion, do we have a second for that motion?
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. Any additional thoughts or comments?
Will we have further discussion after, um, a couple of weeks as to how we're going to do our volunteer stand-down there, and money, and the whole thing, after the attorney's, the whole thing?
Yeah, definitely.
Can talk about this again? Okay, good.
So, I would like to see, um, I would like to see it opening, um... Let's see, what's that?
By March.
Um, yeah, March. So, March eighth, what's that? Well, it's still discussion time.
Well, and, and, and Mike, this is, it might determine on when he can come and clean that up. I wonder how quickly he can...
He's been calling, I think he's excited to get going at it.
Oh, well, that would be wonderful.
And I've had him do stuff at my place, and he jumps right on it.
What's the first Saturday, what's the Saturdays in March?
Uh, the third, tenth, so our first meeting in March is March eighth.
Let's do Saturday, the tenth.
So if we could do March tenth, try to open on March tenth, and have all of this kind of figured out, and...
Advertising to the community or whatever, and let them know.
And we agree, whether it's trailer or truck, it's five dollars to dump.
Well, I haven't, I haven't, we still need to figure that out, because we want it to be able to pay for an excavator. Um, and so, I'll need to figure out how much it is to rent an excavator, and how much John, or not an excavator, I'm sorry, a chipper, a chipper. And how much it'll cost for John, because we definitely don't want it to go into the red. We wanna make it pay for itself.
Yeah, but if we go too high, people won't use it.
Well, it, it's either that or taking it to Lewis County, which... Thirteen dollars plus a forty-minute drive, round trip.
Or they'll just leave it piled up in their yard, and the whole point of this is to try to help the citizens. Jill's going, "Please, people, just decide something, oh, come on." You know, to help the citizens, like an opportunity to clean up and still be affordable for them.
Well, this can be discussed at the next meeting.
Let's come up with some ideas on the next one.
Yeah, we'll refine and polish it if it approves the criteria that's set in the motion. One question for me, though, is, does this include removal of the mulch material? Or do we get to keep that as part of our initial...
He's gonna haul off the first one.
Gotcha, all right, so we start with the first. All right, with that, any other council discussion? Hearing that, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. All righty, then, we're completed the official agenda, now we do have public comment that we'd like to entertain.
Has it been a reason why our public comment has been left to the end of the page?
Yeah, I was studying other strategies by other communities, and a lot of cities have found that if you have public comment prior to the official agenda, it tends to overwhelm the functionality of the council meeting. So, I just figured we'd exercise that motion, see what impact.
I personally like that, I think sometimes we get some negative overtones, and it kind of sets a, sets a tone for the council meeting. And I like to stay constructive about that.
Okay, cool. Just questioning. No one has signed up.
Not a person.
Oh.
Well, let me do my three minutes.
You had your chance, that would have seemed a good idea. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, seven oh, uh, seven PM.